Staff here tonight, so. John, you're gonna take care of, we got board commitments.
I can do it.
That's our job.
To improve our effectiveness, the Harden County Board of Education commits to: Keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district and support district goals, and support board decisions.
Alright, thank you. And recognition, John Wright will take care of that?
Yes, sir. After you pass those, we've got three students we're gonna recognize, and then our HCS Stronger Together Awards tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We need a motion?
A move we accept the, has written the recommendations for recognition.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, second five saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, white sign. Motion carries.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Grant Avis, come on up, Grant. Grant was here early. Grant deserves to go first. When you hear while we're recognizing him, he'll certainly deserve going up there, Grant, get your award there for Ms. Johnson. Grant is a sophomore at Central Harden High School, and as a freshman, he went to the Beta, National Beta Club Convention in June and earned a national championship in social studies. Congratulations, Grant.
Let's talk about it.
Give it to Ms. Johnson there, I think you like it.
Let's talk about it.
They deserve it, at least.
And Mom and Dad, Mom and Dad are here, will you stand up or wave? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice, Grant, appreciate it.
Good job.
Thank you, great job. Ava Clark, is Ava here? Come on up, Ms. Ava. Ava, and when you get done, Ava, just stand up here, because you're coming back here. So Ava's a sixth grader at West Harden Middle School. She earned second place in recyclable art at the National Beta Convention when she was representing Meterview Elementary School. Congratulations. Phoebe Allen and Kinley Zickle, are you guys here? Come on up. Phoebe Allen and Kinley Zickle, they are both sixth graders at North Middle School. They, along with Ava, earned third place in onsite art at the National Beta Convention. Again, they were all representing Meterview Elementary School. Congratulations, Ava. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Do you mind to have their parents?
Yes, the parents of Ava, Phoebe, and Kinley. Would you all stand?
Yes.
Thank you all. Xander Mike, is Xander here? Come on up, Xander. This, these awards, Mr. Chairman, are the HCS Stronger Together Awards. This is Xander Mike, he is a, come on up, go see Ms. Johnson over there, Xander. Xander is a North Harden High School freshman. He has earned the Yes I Can Advocacy Award from the Kentucky Council. From the Kentucky Council on, for exceptional children. His leadership and courage to dream are the qualities that led to his success in earning the award. Stephanie Weekly, who is one of his teachers at North Middle School, shares that Xander has never let any obstacle keep him from pursuing his dreams. His passion for comedy led him to share a daily joke on the school's announcements each day, right, Xander? And after a visit to a loyal TV station, Xander acquired an interest in journalism and a spot, he earned a spot in the North Middle School's morning news crew. So, Ms. Weekly said that Xander was determined to reach new heights while at North Middle and went well beyond the goals he had set for himself. He became a leader at North Middle School, and we know that he is well on his way to becoming one at North Harden High School. And Mr. Newton told me that he will be recognized at the KCEC Conference in November. So congratulations, Ava. Are our parents here? Mom and Dad, are you, some folks here alright? Okay, the New Highland Elementary School staff, I know, yeah, I was gonna say, I'd see some folks, come on up here, guys. This, these are representing, these folks are representing the staff at New Highland Elementary School. They were extremely generous, they have gotten the Staff Award, the HCS Stronger Together Staff Award, by sharing its gifts with Radcliffe Elementary School. Melissa Swift, who cannot be here tonight because her child is playing soccer, like three hours away. Ms. Swift, the New Highland Elementary School Office Manager, she was contacted by Beverly Fraze at Boots Across America to see if students at New Highland could benefit from abundance and abundance of shoes, clothing, and other accessories. Well, the Fort Knox Chapter of the American Red Cross also called Ms. Parker and also reached out to the school with an abundance of popcorn. Is that right? Alright. So, the New Highland staff, knowing that the students at Radcliffe Elementary School, and Ms. Lewis and her team are in the back of the room. Knowing that they could also benefit from these types of items, they contacted Mrs. Lewis and Ms. Sterman at Radcliffe Elementary and shared the wealth with them. At its open house a couple of weeks ago, Radcliffe Elementary School families had the opportunity to venture through the gym on a free shopping spree with a bag of popcorn in hand, all because of the generosity of the New Highland, of New Highland Elementary School. Boots Across America and the Fort Knox Chapter of the American Red Cross. So we appreciate your spirit and love, New Highland Elementary. We appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell and Mr. Parker. Fondy Cox, come on up, Ms. Cox. You may recognize Ms. Cox, she's not getting the Staff Award, but she's getting the Community, the HCS Stronger Together Community Award. So she spent her career, as you all know, in Harden County schools. She truly understands the needs of our students and staff, and she retired last school year from John Harden High School, although Mr. Wells has got her back, so. Although she retired, she recognized that Radcliffe Elementary School students needed to have a special and inviting place to learn. So Ms. Cox donated her time, materials, and effort to ensure that that happened. Listen to all the things, just some of the things that she accomplished this summer. She created multiple slogans to put on the walls such as Honored Trojans, hashtag Radcliffe Strong, and Trojan Cafe, and many more that she had placed around the school. She also donated staff shirts that she designed and created for every staff member at Radcliffe Elementary. She created a welcome banner written in six languages most frequently spoken by Radcliffe students and their families. She designed and decorated an area used by the school nurse, created shirts for the custodial staff, she created indoor buddy benches, picked up donated items and delivered them to Radcliffe Elementary School on multiple occasions. She helped hang posters and sorted donated items. The list truly does seem endless, but Ms. Cox was instrumental in getting Radcliffe Elementary School off to a positive start for the 2019-2020 school year. Her support and her generosity is humbling and appreciated. We appreciate you, Ms. Cox. Thank you.
Mr. Wright, if you don't mind, the teachers who went with the folks to the Beta Convention and any other teachers who are here with the students, Ms. Weekly, would you all please stand?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Sounds like we're off to a very energetic start.
Hold on, I forgot, I forgot somebody.
Did you?
Camille Alexander, come on up here, Camille. I forgot Camille, I forgot to put her on the sheet, so.
Well, we better.
This will be like, damn, she's been a separate.
We better take care of this young lady.
Come on up there. Yeah, North Harden.
North Harden.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm proud of you.
Yes, we are proud of you.
And what did she do? On-site, on-site drawing?
On-site drawing at the National Beta Convention.
Oh.
Yeah, second, second in the whole country, so. My apologies to Camille, my apologies for interrupting you.
Alright.
Great young lady, I know the young lady, super young lady. As you can all see, something that we celebrate here in Harden County Schools is diversity, especially our culture diversity, and of our nearly 14,000 students, I don't know if you all know this, we are represented by 35 spoken languages. And when you meet a child who is coming to our country, doesn't speak, doesn't read, doesn't write English, it's obviously a challenge for our teachers. We've, other than English, the next most prevalent language spoken in our district is Spanish, and behind that is Arabic. So I was fortunate to meet one of our new Arabic students the other day at Harden Elementary School. And knowing that we're continuing to have more people that move to our country and our county that don't speak English as a primary language, we've created a new program to help these students. So I want to introduce Dana Willby, we hired her this past year to be our ELL Coordinator for the district. She's talking about a new program we started this year, and she's also got a teacher here with her tonight. And although you're hearing from adults tonight, I hope by the end of the year you get to hear from some of our students. So, turn over Dana Willby, thank you.
Good evening, and you can actually see me over the podium, I was afraid I was not gonna be seen over. Just to give you a little bit of background, first of all, of how our EL students are identified, when they first move into our district, we give them a home language screener, and that lets us know whether or not we need to possibly screen them, and just simply ask them if another language is spoken in their home or by them. And once we get that information, we screen them. Based on that, if they score below a 4.5, then we go ahead and admit them into our program. From that point on, they take what's known as the access test every January. And once they score 4.5 on that, then they can exit our program. Until then, they are with us. Now, the state expects them to reach proficiency within five to seven years. But with the new transition readiness expectations that have been placed upon us, let's say a freshman that moves in to North Harden High School who speaks no English, now with that new expectation, they expect them to be English proficient within three and a half years. So, we were like, okay, something has to change with the way we are servicing these students to help them reach English proficiency quicker. And the idea of the Newcomer Academy came about from that. I went to Jefferson County and visited their Newcomer Academy as well to get some ideas. So the way it works here is our students actually start off the day at their home school, and these are just high school and middle school students that attend our Newcomer Academy. So they're there with their other classmates for the morning, and then in the afternoon they travel to EC3 where they receive more intensive English instruction for about two hours of the day. We also change the way we're servicing students that are higher level but still not proficient at North Middle School and at John Harden and North Harden, and I'm gonna let Ms. Sanders talk about that in a minute. She is duly certified, she's an English Certified Teacher and ESL, so it makes her perfect in covering content and reaching those English language learners. She's also one of the teachers at the Newcomer Academy as well, and again, I'll let her share about that in a minute. This basically was a way for us to use our resources of teachers in a more effective way. So, Ms. Sanders, if you would like to come on up and explain kind of the curriculum and how you address their needs.
Absolutely. So I'm gonna start by talking about our Newcomer Academy, and I'm co-teaching that with Mr. Chad Poole. And our strategy so far has been to do centers, so station work where we can use the abundance of resources already at our disposal, but more efficiently. Although they're all newcomers, they come to us at various levels of English language proficiency with different backgrounds. So centers allow us to differentiate based on where they're at with their English language proficiency and give them exactly what they need, and it also allows us to focus on the four domains, which is listening, speaking, reading, and writing. So we can differentiate those groups based on their English proficiency, but we can also allow them to feel comfortable within their age groups. So since we have middle and high school students, we can separate them based on age as well. But what we're already finding early on in this program is that our older students are wanting to mentor the younger ones. They're stepping in and wanting to take that role on their own without us having to instruct it. So we're seeing that we don't have to separate them as much as we thought we would need to, and they're ready to take on those new challenges. And I've already seen improvement in their ability to try new words and speak and engage in conversation, so it's already improved their discourse tremendously. So I think it's going to be great. Also, at the high schools, North Harden and John Harden, I'm teaching our Level Three and Four English Language students. What I've done there is I've taken a combination of the English Language Arts Standards, and I've combined those with our WEDA standards. The state of Kentucky is part of a WEDA consortium, and those are our standards that we're held accountable for to meet those four domains. So I focus on combining those two standards to meet their needs, but also make sure that they're getting their English Language Arts curriculum they need as well. It is a modified approach, so it goes slower than a regular English Language Arts classroom would, because many of our ESL students don't have as much background knowledge. So we have to take time to build their background knowledge, build their confidence before we delve into the content. But if you take that initial step to give them time to develop the background, there's a much stronger buy-in with the content, and it's more meaningful for the student. So I think this is going to be a better way for us to service our students and give them the direct instruction they need at a pace that they need.
Now, she was supposed to say all this in Spanish, and you're supposed to translate it.
How many, how many ESL kids do we have?
Approximately 361. Well, not right, no. Right now, in the district, we're about 230 active, and then, once they exit the program, we actually monitor them for four years to make sure they're still being successful in their classes, and at that point, they are fully released.
Here's what Chad has realized, we have middle schoolers and high schoolers in this program, they're going to EC3 for the first term. We have middle schoolers on that campus. They're being bused from West Harden, North Middle, Bluegrass, and now we have, we bus them back to their home school in the afternoon to their home high school. So getting the middle schoolers off at a high school in the afternoon for the first week was a little bit intimidating for those young kids, but they responded well. I think they're starting to realize already the benefit of the academy, and I'm just proud that Dana took the initiative to make this happen, because we've gotta do what's best for kids. We've gotta meet every kid's needs, and that's a challenge that we're up to, so it's a...
What about the elementary level?
Well, I mean, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll address that. So at the elementary level?
You need to come up to the mic, please, sorry.
At the elementary level, they tend to catch on a lot faster. The gap's not as big, and especially in kindergarten and first grade, every kid's learning English, basically. So they're getting taught those phonics skills and stuff. They do receive services, just not as much. They may be pulled out if they're a lower level. The EL teacher pulls them out two to three times a week for about 30 minutes, giving them more precise instruction. The Level Threes and Fours, our EL assistants push into the classroom and provide services that way, helping them with their classwork, that type of thing.
But I want you to sit here, we're talking about inside the school building, pulling them out three times a week for 30 minutes versus five days a week for two hours, you're talking about 10 hours of intense instruction versus an hour and a half.
And for those middle and high schoolers, you know, the gap by then is a lot larger, the learning curve.
Well, but the other part of that is if we were going to individual schools, the middle and high schools would be the exact same way. They would be receiving that 30 minutes, three days a week. So by putting them all together, we are fully utilizing the skill set.
Now, with our 35 different countries, we've got kids that are doing projects right now here in the school, you're about their homeland. And I would love to have some of those kids come sometime in the year and actually present in their language, have somebody translate for them. Because I think that's the point, is to show they're growing, because some of these kids and their communication, that's what we want with them, they'll speak it, read it, write it, and the confidence is gonna grow. But this is the needed program, and I appreciate, I appreciate their work.
I'm gonna assume there's some outreach to the home, to interference.
And what we did, we did an open house for the families at EC3 on August the 6th, and...
And we have family nights just for ESL families, and bringing them in and helping them reach out, have community members come in as well, and helping them get connected to the community.
Yeah.
Wait, is that a little hand right or to right, if you want to review, I think we do ESL just as...
So it's easier for the young ones, a little harder for the older ones, and the ones like me, just forget it.
Yeah, you're, you're...
We're done, Charlie, we're done.
We're done.
Now, wait a minute.
You're past it, Charlie, for getting it.
Yeah, that sounds, sounds interesting. Appreciate what y'all done. Great. Okay. Recognition of visitors, anyone wanna sign up? John speak? Alright, thank you. Construction updates, we had at our noon meeting, JRA and Alliance Group there, and they gave us updates on all the school projects that have taken place this year throughout county. I think a lot of updates have been done, parking lots, and a lot of improvements have been seen at all the schools, and Lincoln Trail and East, the New East Harden are progressing along, making headway. They're not complaining about too much rain right now, so we've overcome a small obstacle there, and everything is almost back on schedule. John, you got anything you need to add to it?
Yes, sir.
JRA and those groups could be here at night, this county works well into their schedule sometimes during the noon meeting that we have, so we listen to them for whatever length they want to talk, complain, or brag about, and I think maybe that everyone here is not always interested in that, so if it turns out to be different, you all let us know, and we can change that. They will be coming to some of the meetings as progression increases there, but, or if they want a big change order or something, usually they'll show up for that.
Oh, yeah.
We're down to consideration of the consent agenda, and you want to have anything, if they want to delete or add to that, we need to... Or any questions on any of it?
Um, this annual data security report. How do we know if our data is secure? Mr. Tad?
And have we been hacked?
No, we haven't.
Good, that's good.
The state, the state provides us a lot of tools to use to secure our network. We use those and implement those. We have a lot of procedures in place that are outlined, that we put in place with our staff. Biggest threat we have right now is like a lot of phishing attempts, emails, so we're informing our staff to be aware of those, trying to do a better job of that, getting out in front of that a whole lot more. We have a whole lot more tools in place right now to block those from even getting in. So in the past four or five months, we've really implemented a lot of procedures before those can even get to our people, so that's really helped out a lot.
Do, do students have email accounts on our system?
Yes.
They do? Yes. Man, that's massive.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else anyone wants to... We've got approval for our North Harden Band to travel to Indianapolis November 16th through 18th by a commercial carrier, and we're sort of classified some of these things, it's being shortage of school bus availability, and so, and our drivers. And so, they'll be taking commercial carriers, those probably about the, not a great deal difference in cost. Central Harden High School, JROTC Raider Team going to Molina, Georgia, November 1st through the 3rd. Approving inter-agency agreements between Harden County Board of Education, Spectrum Care, Crossroads Treatment, and Lincoln Trail Behavior. And we got the financial reports, approval with the HCECTV contract for production services with Brandenburg Telecom for live sports coverage, July 1st through June 30th of 2020. And approving a lease with Harden County Water District One to place, for property on North Middle School campus, to place a water tower. And, and personnel, certified personnel, certified, or classified personnel actions, site-based minutes. That's about it.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, second five saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, white sign, motion carries. And that takes us down to action items, and election of a board vice chair for the remainder of 2019. Andrea Palmer is now a Reno citizen, and so she resigned at, after our last meeting, which was in July 31st, I think was her official resignation, so floor's open for recommendations for a board vice chair, the pay is the same as the chairman, so there's quite an increase there. I mean, somebody really needs to jump on this.
Let me do the damage again here, I'd like to nominate Dawn. I really enjoyed nominating Andrea before, but she's gone, so...
Are you trying to run her off?
I hope that doesn't mean anything.
I hope it's not a bad thing, but I've learned a lot from everybody here, but Andrea and Dawn have really helped me be a better member, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna put Dawn up for this, if she would consider it.
I'll second that.
It sounds like to me she really don't have a chance, so you can delete that if she would consider.
I was just trying to figure that out, Charlie.
Yeah, okay.
Just make sure he doesn't go anywhere, and you won't have to do anything.
That's exactly the plan.
That's exactly what she did, okay? So you can help tie him down, that's good.
Alright, well, we'll, we'll, we'll see about that. Okay, any other nominations? If not, all in favor of the motion, second five saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, motion carries.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, and...
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
You need to watch your bank deposit, because you know, you'll get a large increase in the pay.
Can I plan a trip, Charlie?
No.
No, without asking.
New business, you want to have any new business? Superintendent, have a report? You gonna tell us school started?
It did start, and next week, I believe, we start preschool, is that correct this year? On the 26th of August, we'll have preschool in session, which will add to a lot of fun there. Just as an update, we have kept the hashtag HCS Stronger Together. We found that this had a huge impact in our district, and we continue to see this impact. Just really want to think our local businesses, Mr. John Wright, went out with Bluegrass Cellular and Don't Miss the Bus and collected, I believe, 33,000 items. Mr. Wright, is that correct? But in addition to Bluegrass Cellular, the Kentucky State Police, Eat Town Police also brought us some supplies, as well as many local churches provided book bags filled with everything the students would need. So we had several hundred book bags filled with all the supplies, so we greatly appreciate the community support, and that just goes on to mention, you know, that hashtag Stronger Together is still alive and well. Also, our resource centers have provided us with excellent back-to-school celebrations. Included in this is really opportunities for our families to learn about community services that they might need, and so we really appreciate their hard work, and of course, they were instrumental in passing out the book bags filled with supplies to our students who were in need of those. Mr. Bauer, this morning, or at our noon board meeting, talked about our school safety plan. So parents, as we start a new school year in somewhat crazy times, our principals this summer with their administrative teams worked on safety plans for each of our schools, so we just ask for your patience and understanding. When you come to a school, you are going to be asked your name and your reason for visiting. If you don't have a reason to be there, it's safer for our students not to have extra people in the building. So, Mr. Bauer did a great job of helping our schools through that process. We just ask for your understanding and our desire to keep your kids safe each and every day. On top of that, our Transportation Department just knocked it out of the park this year. They provided postcards for all of our students. They provided postcards for all of our students, so they know where they would be picked up, where they would be dropped off. A lot of hard work goes into that. And then the schools, of course, back that up with checking with each student each day to make sure they're getting on the right bus. We didn't hit it 100%, but we were definitely right up there at the 99% mark. So we greatly appreciate all of their hard work. And then a special thanks to our parents. You have gone online and done the update on the parent campus portal, and so we were able to do, redo some paperwork. So we just really appreciate your support. Driving into parking lots on open house nights, I knew our parents were very excited to see the school doors open, but their partnership will make a huge difference in the impact we have for students. So thanks to those folks as well. And if I may, I'm gonna ask some people to stand. We have several new principals here this evening, who, you met Ms. Lewis at the last meeting, but we have Ms. Carrie Prater, who is the new principal at Meadowview Elementary. We have Ms. Ashley Cockrell, who is the new principal at Vine Grove Elementary. And then behind them is Mr. Kenneth Elmore, Kenneth Michael Elmore, who is the new principal at West Harden Middle School. So we just want to welcome them and thank you all for being here tonight. So that's it. And we don't need an executive session. What was enrollment, first day enrollment? First day enrollment was right around 14...
We're at 14,100 right now, which is about 225 under projection, but Labor Day hadn't got here yet.
Yeah. Yeah. 14, okay. Always interested in that. Yes, and when preschool starts, they'll increase.
Okay, we are gonna have a short executive session to review applications for this vacant seat right here. But we won't be taking any action, I don't think, after, till later, but we, so if y'all like to skip out, that'd be fine. Like I said, appreciate y'all coming out. I think there's a Central Harden football game going on right now, and are real close. And I don't know what else is going on. You got one going on too? Alright, so if you can go enjoy some football this afternoon, weather's cooled off, nice night.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, second five, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.